...that would get kids motivated, engaged, and participating again. So it doesn't, you know, not necessarily all the bells and whistles. I don't necessarily have to have the Chromebook out all the time, but doing something different in that aspect, getting downtown, doing a service project with them, saying, "Let's get back in the stream, get those boots on, and let's build some boats out of recyclables, and start mapping some things out in the stream bed," you know, all of that kind of stuff, that real-world application is a hook for them. And building that time back into the schedule where we can do that, I think, is key.
And I think the flexibility also, you know, maybe in September, October, our schedule looks a little different than it would in January, February. So maybe our fifth and sixth graders don't just have a two-minute transition, maybe theirs is more like four, and they're out in the hallways maybe for two, we're kind of encouraging that, but the reality of it is, this is a big change on them, so in terms of phasing them and getting them more comfortable with less time in the hallway, that might take some time. And I see us looking very different in September, October than May and June. But the nice thing is, we have that ability now. And maybe my group, on a certain day, needs a five-minute breather, and we are doing, you know, walking around the room, cross, I mean, I don't know, all sorts of kind of physical things, just to kind of get them into my lesson, okay, I can do that. And I can work that out with my teammate to allow some extra time, so I can still get through my content. So I think that that, in terms of phasing, I hope that the schedule will naturally allow that, and maybe even more of that than our rigid bell time and that transitional time.
I will also say, on the technology piece, in sixth grade, we are one-to-one with the Chromebooks, and they're phenomenal. They're going to take the state test on the Chromebooks this year, they're great. It enhances the learning, it doesn't take place in the learning. In social studies, I teach the ancient world in sixth grade, and we take virtual reality tours of the places that we're studying. And to be able to do that with them is amazing, and they love that. The other thing is, the fifth and sixth grade schedule as a whole is going to be beneficial for students and teachers. Myself, I teach the CT section, so I see some kids three periods a day. I know who's hungry, who's tired, who needs a snack, who didn't get enough sleep last night. And being able to share, you know, hopefully 40 to 50 kids with one other person next year will only make those relationships so much deeper and more meaningful for us, for our students, with each other. So I think in fifth and sixth grade, it's really, really important.
I think that's the best way we're going to support this kind of large change. For some of our students, you know, fifth graders won't really know any different, but by having less teachers and being able to spend more time, more instructional time with them, I think we're really going to increase those relationships and be able to support them through this change and eventually get them to a better place with more targeted instruction.
Mr. Aldrich.
You know, I know that everyone learns in a different way. Some people learn by reading, some people learn by speaking lecture, too. I was never one of those students, and I had to actually participate. And I think that what you're talking about, in getting them active and participating in teamwork and participating in helping others, it's a great way of, oh, no. Don't listen to any of this story. But yeah, I see a lot of energy here, and I'm very optimistic about that. A lot of energy.
Mr. Forster?
This is a lot of information. Is it possible for us to have a copy of this PowerPoint? Because I would like to really take a look. I'm, you know, I'm slow processing sometimes, and I'm trying to read along, so that'd be very helpful. The only other question I had is, in regards to the use of the technology for the students, the computers, computer-based testing's become such a big thing, do we have the support that you guys feel necessary for teaching the students how to use computers correctly so that they are the most successful they can be on these computer-based apps?
We ran the simulation about two weeks ago, and everything went really smoothly. It's helpful because in September, we really take our time. We're teaching them how to handle the Chromebook, how do you carry it, how do you store it, how do we access Google Docs, what is the appropriate to use. The biggest thing that we struggle with is they're better with their thumbs than they are with their typing. So that's something that we have to work on. And sometimes, we just practice typing our spelling words, other times, we found that if we write our rough drafts by hand, when we go in to type them, they're more willing to elaborate. They go on and on and on, they're getting really good at editing their work, it's nice to be able to share and edit each other's. So I think with the Chromebooks coming to fifth grade next year, it's only going to get better. And as they move from sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, I think they're very comfortable with them. And we had no problems when we did the simulation. It'll be interesting to see the day of it, but we feel that they're ready for it. They're on them every day, reading, writing.
And just to add to that, kind of from a different perspective, I mean, I think this year, we feel very supported. We've had a lot of additional technology put into our classrooms, as well as tools given to us just recently, where we can monitor our students on their Chromebooks. So we're able to sit at our teacher desk through this Imperial program, I'm able to monitor what each student, excuse me, is doing on their program, I can send them comments from my own computer, feedback on their work, or why are you listening to music, you're supposed to be on this program. So there's a lot of current technology being, you know, pushed out to us, taught to us, tools for us to use to monitor it. Chromebooks are like a procedure for my students. They come in, they get out their notebook, as soon as they get out their Chromebook, everything is open and up with a date before the bell even rings. The technology has just become something so habitual to them that it's not even something they notice, it's just literally become routine and practice of the classroom. And they know whether we're transitioning from writing in the notebook to doing the online journal, they can transition between both, you know, effectively and efficiently.
Are they, are Chromebooks on carts or?
Some are in carts, some are on trays, depends on what year you've got your Chromebooks.
Is that something down in the future you think about?
That's a joke question.
We do have, we do have a process where, at least at the high school level, students can sign on the Chromebook. We haven't crossed the bridge yet in terms of a true one-to-one, where they can bring them in.
Now, I'd like to add, the use of the Chromebooks increases the efficiency and the quality of the students' work. So you have a student that's a struggling reader or a struggling writer, the quality of their work instantly improves, simply because they've got more experience with that. I was recently working on some graphing and using Google Sheets, which students can create, you know, when you think about making a graph years ago, it was get out the ruler, get out some color and pencils and go at it. Now, within a matter of five to 10 minutes, they can have a graph that's up and looking professionally produced, and then go through the details and, you know, the intricacies of how the program works. They know, in many cases, how to work through that and how to help fellow students in many cases.
We do continue to have a computer CDOs curriculum as well in our middle school, where the students get, you know, formal training from their, in their computer class with their CDOs teacher each year as well.
Ms. Paul.
So much excitement, energy, big goal at the end, we have the ask, what are the immediate next steps? What do you do between now and when we know where we are with staff and to keep this ball moving forward?
We're going to continue professional development on what we would like to see in the classrooms, what we need. I said today, we're working on our MTSS program, that is something that is integral in making schedule changes for that. We'll continue to have those discussions and work on that plan. So, you know, regardless of what happens, you know, we have some changes structurally that we know are best for our kids, and we're going to continue to do that work.
Just one question I'd give would be, so if this were funded, would your, would we have a fairly decent sense within one, two, three years as to effectiveness with any sort of modifications that you would have to make throughout, you know, to accommodate whatever you need to do, you know, to make it what you envisioned here? I mean, that kind of timeframe?
Any change takes three to five years. So if you want to see test scores going up, if you want to see that kind of thing, you're not going to see it before three to four years.
I'm not so much sure about test scores so much as just what you would see in terms of, you know, I mean, it's kind of a funny thing, but the growth of the students as they then go onto high school and their preparedness when they go to freshman year.
I think we're looking at a lot of different things, and, you know, test, test score is a small piece of the development of a student. When we're talking about how they view their role in the school, how they feel about their own achievement and the pride that they take in that. It's something that we're, we're trying to foster in our students, but we're having difficulty in some cases doing that. And so with the additional time and the closer development of relationships, we're hoping to pull some of those students in and say, you know, this is, this is something you can do. And I would like to think, you know, we're working with the MTSS committee now and trying to get at the root of why some of these students are struggling and how we can best meet their needs, and that's, Mrs. Troutman said, it's going to take place, we're going to have to do it one way or another, just to make sure that we're meeting the needs of these students that are coming in.
But I would say, you will notice, I mean, after the first year, you're going to notice a change in the kids. But I would say definitely, three years, you know, I would say, you're going to see a different student coming out of the middle school.
And then Ms. Snyder, though, only has four years before she has three years of system. And then we lose Ms. Snyder, whoever, and, you know. Anyway, that's another problem for another day. Just a wonderful presentation. Mr. Surtisio, anything you'd want to add?
Yeah, I want to point out a couple of things, and I was lucky enough to, to privy to this presentation previously, and one of the things that hasn't been brought up is while we have an incredible committee that's been working on this with, with Miss Troutman and her leadership, this has been presented to each grade level at least once, if not twice. You've sorted through a couple of issues I know that you had in a particular grade level, it's been talked about with the faculty as a whole. So the energy and excitement that you have here isn't just here, and there's a lot of support throughout the building. This is a presentation of what's best practices in the middle school. Teaming is something we should pursue, absolutely, you wouldn't have gotten this presentation if I didn't feel strongly about it. And I'm excited because you have, you have a large group of professionals who are telling us, we want to do something different, because we can be better for our students. An 80-minute class doesn't mean someone's going to stand there and talk to children for 80 minutes, particularly middle schoolers, oh my gosh. So they're saying, we need to adjust our practices, we need more time, we want to do more project-based learning, which is what Ms. Lauer talked about, it's what I've told you, every time we see student groups come here, they talk about the things that they're doing. So now we want to incorporate that into the classroom. So it is very exciting, it does, it does deserve our full thorough review and determine if we can move forward with it. And before I finish, thank you so much, this has just been incredible, it's been an incredible journey this year, and listening to Mrs. Troutman and then, and then working with you as a, as a committee as well.
I've been touching on Rob.
Just again, folks don't need to stay just so you're welcome to do other things. Okay, that takes us to Roman numeral three. The boards reserve this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual group. Concerns and comments during this session should be directly related to items listed on the approved agenda for this meeting. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet, which is at the back of the room, and return to our district clerk, Christine Slagel, who's right here. So is there anyone who wishes to address the board on any item relative to the agenda, including the committee presentation? Yes, sir.
Can we understand, by the way?
Yeah, if you could state your name and address, that'd be wonderful.
James N. Orch, and address? Well, I just had a question about how you weren't going to let the fifth graders see all the other grades. I thought that when I was in fifth grade, I really liked seeing the eighth graders, like my brother, he was in eighth grade, it was really enjoyable for me to see them. I feel that it's important for us to see people that are older than us, be able to associate with them. So I was just wondering why you don't want, like, different grades to see each other in the hallways.
Thank you. We don't actually respond to questions at this point, so if you would like to write your question down, I apologize, but we would get back to you relative to that. And I don't know how many of the middle school people be sticking around, but as any of the presenters leave, you might want to just ask that question, because I'm sure they would love to be able to talk to you about that. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board on any item relative to agenda items? There is an opportunity at the conclusion to address the board on any issue. Okay, if no one, then I'll close that. Then we have minutes from our regular board meeting in February 26th, if we could bring those to the floor for consideration? And that's Mr. Forster, and is there a second to that? Second by Ms. Paul Fortna, and any questions, comments, corrections? Ms. Slagel, thanks for sending those out. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In opposed, those are approved, and that takes us to a 31-day emergency transportation contract, could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Ms. Gagenjatson, is there a second to that? Mr. Aldrich, and any, anything on that, Mr. Forbes?
Yep.
Any questions from Mr. Forbes, Mr. Surtisio? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. In opposed, that's approved. That then takes us to an update on our 2019-2020 budget capital reserve. Mr. Surtisio?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Bobstein. So, Mr. Forbes and I continue to work on the next budget presentation. You may recall that the last presentation did not include any additional staffing requests. As you heard this evening, we should anticipate staffing requests that support programs and those programs should support building in district goals. I anticipate that our next meeting, March 26th, we will present a clearer outlook of next year's potential budget proposal to you that will include staffing needs. It should be noted that if the budget is on time from the state, we will have complete information on April 1st. As you're aware, we have been building next year's budget by taking a comprehensive review of previous expenditures while utilizing the governor's budget of early February to determine our state aid. Hopefully, this final state aid budget provides positive news for our district. We are in a stable position, however, because of this board's past fiscal stewardship, so I'm looking forward to moving forward to that final budget presentation. Additionally, last week, at my request, Mrs. Slagel forwarded a letter to me regarding creating a new capital reserve fund. This option's been vetted by the audit committee, audit committee, and also discussed at some point with the, with the facilities committee. Of course, we've discussed this option during open session as well. As the letter states, it's my recommendation that the district ask voters to approve a proposition to create a new capital reserve fund, not to exceed $750,000. The proposition, if acted on by the board, would be included on the ballot with the budget vote proposition on May 21st. In order for the proposition to be placed on the ballot, it needs, it will need board approval at our next meeting, March 26th.
Were any questions, comments from Mr. Surtisio?
Is there anything to discuss, as far as between Mr. Surtisio and Mr. Forbes, as far as what dollar amount you want to see beyond what we discussed at the audit committee meeting?
For, in terms of the capital reserve, you know, that, that up to $750,000, we settled on that, my recollection is an audit committee, in conjunction with the previous work we did populating our reserve lines, because if taken in whole, now, mind you, the board does not have to, have to, if the voters approve the capital reserve, they don't have, we don't, the board does not have to fund that reserve in its entirety in year one, they can. If it does, it takes that unallocated fund balance from 11% down to about 8%, which was our stated goal at that time.
And can funds be allocated to that account without board approval?
Funds can't be allocated that, to a capital reserve without voter approval.
After it's established.
After it's established.
The board will make a motion to move that money.
It can be in any increment, $1,000 at a time, or whatever situation gives you at that point.
Do you want to clarify something? And I know I've told you before that we had, that the board would have six years to populate those funds, and 10 years to spend it. I stand corrected, and I thank Jeff Stone from Hudson Ross, you actually have a full 10 years to fund the reserve and 10 years to spend it. So I wasn't completely wrong, but I certainly wasn't completely right, and I apologize for any confusion that that may have caused.
And once money's put into the capital reserve, we can't draw it out.
You have to use it within 10 years, and if it's not used, it goes back to the general fund.
But in the interim, we can't draw it out.
Correct.
Just so everyone's understanding.
The balance also is that you can create it for any amount that you want, the balance is what is reasonable expectation for project, what is reasonable expectation in the eyes of the community. If you went out and said, "We're going to create a capital reserve for $4 million," I'm sure that will cause some questions somewhere. So you're trying to just bridge that gap at $750,000 based upon the potential of about a $10 million project at the next future point, seem to be reasonable.
And so with allocating the request for a $750,000 reserve, you spoke about how that would bring our fund balance down in the line to 8% from 11.0, but we had talked only funding $75,000, so that would change the initial investment in that reserve with $75,000 discussed at the audit committee meeting. So that really wouldn't defer the actual percentage that we're, over the state's 4%.
Your recollection is that if the voters approve a capital reserve, we would fund it to $75,000?
We were going to start it, fund it with $75,000, the $3.6 million cash reserves that we had.
Well, the board could certainly choose to do that, but they also could choose any, any other amount as well.
It was just the recommendation. Am I remembering that correctly?
I don't, I disagree, Mr. Hawke.
Did you? I see a head nod over there. We were going to fund it over several years.
Then I stand, stand corrected, you're, you can, you can fund it over several years.
Because we've talked about putting 75, we actually talked about budgeting $75,000 for six years, starting the reserve with $75,000.
Okay. And maybe that's what the board chooses to do, and, and maybe the audit committee can gather again and have a further discussion on that. The important point today is that the board needs to make a decision by the next meeting whether we're going to ask the board to record that capital reserve fund at $10.
And we were also supposed to receive information as to how we were going to fund the project without precedent classes, was a question at the audit committee, because there's no sense of starting a reserve, because we are looking at, from the understanding of what you were telling us, a 10 million dollar project in five years.
And that was based on when the next debt is coming off of?
Well, that was based on a conversation I had with Maggie at Medical Solutions as to what the next project could look like, and the time period might be, it was all four of us. Hypothetical, if we do this in five years, I looked at something about $10 million, what would we need in a reserve or local share in a fund?
To keep the tax level flat.
To keep it.
So we're not taking down more debt.
Yeah, you have some fluctuation as you were with any project, up or down, and the amount that went up or down will depend on what you have reserved and apply, and what your total outlay for the project amount is, well, obviously, $15 million with $750,000 is different than $8 million with $750,000.
So, speaking in relation to debt service, and I thought it rather helpful how BOSI's was presented to us with a five-year actual, and where we, you know, spent, I understand there's not much change in debt service, but there is a big change when debt service ends. So would there be a possibility to be able to send to the whole board the last five years of our debt service, when debt service ended, and then where are our collections beyond the end of the debt service? We paid off debt service, how many years did we collect beyond that? You know, where that money came from?
When you talk about collection, you're talking about forcing from the state.
Right. Well, we've got both the state and the taxpayers, because the taxpayers are 18%. Is that close?
And the point that Mr. Hawke was making, that some of the, like, the Vision 200 then goes out, another 10 years or whatever, it was like $1,500 a year after this big drop this year, some of this extension of the revenue incentive.
And I don't know if that would be correct in asking, was there been any manipulation in the funds as to re-bonding?
At one point in time, the district did refinance, but that was, would have been something the board approved, but that would have been a wildly amount. So it was called, actually called refunding, but we did do that.
Do you recall what year that was?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to say it had to be six or seven years at least. I can let you know that, too.
And I almost think that that was around taking advantage of the reduced interest rates.
Yeah, there was, some stuff came down from the state, and that opportunity presented itself.
Yeah, I'm guessing 2012, 2013.
Yes, I'd say around that time period.
I would have given you that a lot of it.
Yeah, but any time you do any kind of refinancing or actually straight-up financing, it requires board activity, so.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding any of that? Okay, then, the boards reserve this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet and return to the district clerk, Christine Slagel. Anyone wish to address the board on any issue whatsoever? Yes?
Andy Love with 30 Ryan Place, I just want to say how proud I am of these middle school teachers that I listened to this evening, hired a lot of them, thrilled to hear the excitement, and I just want to urge the board to support them, because we could have done a lot of the things that they're talking about and asking about years ago, we could have hired four teachers. And so if you're willing to do that, you can see all these things come to fruition. But I love the excitement, and I hope that you're going to come through for them and not disappoint them, because you can see the excitement, you can feel it, and they can do great things with resources, so I'm thrilled that you're considering providing them those resources. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board on any issue? Hearing none, we'll close that then. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for March 26th at 6 o'clock, right here in the library. We also received letters from Linda Hoffman, Ron Catalano, regarding the upcoming BOSI's Board of Education election. And I think, do we have to have nominations? We'll have to check that, okay, because we'll want to make sure that we have that for our next board meeting, that we've got that covered, so. Mr. Surtisio, anything?
Yeah, I do have a number of things, and I prepared this before I knew my, my friends were going to be here, but I want to thank Mr. Bertranddo and our participation in government students for having me as a guest speaker last Friday. Truly enjoyed my time talking with the students, they have a genuine interest in our work, they also have a lot of questions for you, Mr. Paskey, so heads up, they're coming your way. I attended the Niskes Midware Conference in Albany last week, I did share the talking points that Niskes developed with the board through previous correspondence. Interestingly, two items we talked about, creating a reserve for TRS and a reserve for unanticipated special education costs, were on the list. There's a lot of support amongst superintendents about those items, hopefully, they come to fruition. Next Tuesday, the 19th, we have a facilities committee meeting with our partners from CPL and DCC to further fine-tune our project, and thanking them for that, the facility, for the facilities committee, for working with me on finding a common date that would work for all of us. The board will recall, we had a very positive outcome with the manner in which we staged our bids, so that all of our base bid items and all of our alternate items would our bids, so that all of our base bid items and all of our alternative items will be addressed in this project. The students will tell you that I literally told them I'm jacked about this project, which really made them laugh, but I really am. The facilities committee will be looking at additional scope areas that may be addressed in the project, and I anticipate we'll have a construction timeline towards the end of March 4th or late April.
Thank you. Ms. Gagenchats? No? Ms. Paul Fortna? Mr. Aldrich? Mr. Forster? Mr. Hawke? Mr. Jan Berner?
Thank you.
Ms. Troutman?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Pashki?
Two quick things. I wanted to give a shout out to Lori Depew. Last meeting, I had to go to the concert, so I didn't get a chance to say it. I just wanted to mention what a, what a great job she does here. She was featured in The Observer for, for all the work she does. She does run all of our internship programs, gives kids a lot of great real-world experiences, and just, just wanted to thank her publicly for that. Also, I just had an update on the JR OTC that I wanted to share with the board. I met, I, I contacted the Dunkirk sergeant for the ROTC, and he helped me get information from the JR, JR OTC at Second Brigade, USACC. And they informed us that, that the USACC is not expanding JR OTC programs at this time, but they will accept applications. Startups will only be approved when a current program is deactivated. Startups are selected in order of merit and need, and the things they consider are school population, socioeconomic and ethnic background of the school population, how long schools have been on the list, and if a school on the list has demonstrated motivation to start up a program. Also, they said that there is no certain order that's followed. However, schools that have more of the above criteria can get more favorable attention. In other words, an inner-city diverse school with more than 1,000 students that has been on the list a while and is paying the cost to house and run a program would have a greater chance to gain a, a program. Cross-training, this is something that I thought might be possible, the way that we share services with sports, but they said that cross-training with other schools is prohibited. For example, we can't share, like in Dunkirk's program, even if our school district agreed to pay part of the cost. And lastly, the cost for a school desiring to start a program and pay for it, the first two years is about $200,000 per year, and that covers the salary for two instructors and cadet uniforms and equipment. Also, the instructors have to be a retired commissioned officer, and then the other one is a non-commissioned officer. So that's what I was able to find out about JR OTC.
Thanks, Mr. Ford.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Mr. Fordson? Mr. Rada?
At your place, Max, there is the agenda for this Friday's in-service day. We will be hosting Weston Kishnik, who is a senior fellow for the International Center for Leadership and Education. He will be speaking to the combined faculties of Pudonia, Westfield, and Tassadega on old school wisdom and new school technologies, blended learning that works. You probably heard the teachers talk about blended learning. This is one of our initiatives that we've been, have been this entire year. A great big thank you for the teacher associations of all three districts who are providing breakfast for everybody. A thank you for our three districts who are providing lunch for everyone. If you notice on the back, there is a map of the school with all of the different locations where the departments and where levels are going to be meeting in the afternoon to talk about and to work on an activity based on the board's session. We're really, really looking forward to this day.
Thanks, Ms. Rada. Thanks, Ms. Rada. Ms. Farrell?
Yeah, I wanted to let you know that in October, we had our national speaker come in and worked on one of our in-service days with our special ed. And there are general ed counterparts that have consultant classrooms, teaching classrooms, her name is Susan Hess. Susan is going to be coming back to the district in two weeks, the 25th and 26th of March, and she's going to spend some time at each building level, just kind of observing, I guess, if you will, what we do in those classrooms and really kind of getting the baseline of what our special ed instruction looks like in the general ed setting so that we can move forward with the plan to improve that instruction. More to come on that election night. Thanks.
Ms. Slagel?
Great.
Then, where? Oh, yeah, Mr. Hawke.
I just would like to comment on what Mr. Pashki was talking about with the usual JR OTC. I'm, I'm rather disappointed with what I heard from you, not what you said, if not you. I mean, that you're not allowed to actually share with other schools.
Sure.
And, you know, has BOSI's been looked at as a go-between sort of, between the other schools, or did they have any sort of program? I mean, I'm sure you would have heard about it, but have you checked into it?
I could check into BOSI's. I, I haven't ever heard of anything similar to BOSI's, but I can ask, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't seem that it's worthwhile for one or two students to create that type of cost to a school district, but sharing and that not being allowed seems rather weak thinking.
Okay. Then we have scheduled, I want to take advantage, we have Michael Horning here for a workshop session that we're going to do on superintendent's evaluation and, because we're going online with that this year. And so we're actually going to go into a workshop, have Mr. Horning kind of help us through our super eval, and then we're going to be adjourning. We're not going to have any other business for the board. We're not going to be voting on anything other than adjourning. You're welcome to stay for the workshop. Middle school folks were really kind to even sit through the remainder of our meeting and appreciate again your presentation, but that's really all we're going to be doing. So for practical purposes, if, you know, students, I mean, you're welcome again to stay for the workshop, but if you want us to sign you out, I don't believe we would be breaking any rules if we let them go before the conclusion. And thanks again, everyone. Really appreciate you all being here.